It is Tuesday, September twentieth at six P M. We will call this meeting to order tonight. Per the agenda, it's sort of up and down types of things to look at here. First thing is public forum. Do we have any public forum or participation questions? All the above. Seeing what we do not have any public forum items, we will shift to new business. First, and this list is continued discussion regarding the town administrator job advertisement and hiring schedule.
Yeah, you thought you mentioned before David, I need to be sort of riddled down, right?
Better to over describe than under describe.
The thing I'm looking for is just some feedback from the board as to whether there's something in there that I missed that should be in there back then, but. And I want to get it then.
Yeah, soon. I know.
Do you guys want a second to read this before we dive in?
Um, just the way that sentence being responsible for preparing, preparing and overseeing the fifty million dollar budget, including the regional school district. Should that say which includes? That almost sounds like there's a budget outside of the fifteen. I that's beyond my toolbox of grammar, but. He uses grammar. Anybody know which or that? Come on, your engineers, come on, come on.
Should we mention anything in the second paragraph about, oh, you see, I see grant writing? Is that sort of, is it understood that that's grant seeking almost?
Yeah.
Like, all right, it's a sort of one of the same. Okay, I don't. Okay. And the day to day operations that is sort of, there's some phrase where like it so it's like it includes like staff management, all oversight of the building, you know, that day to day types of items. Yeah, I saw the human resource line, which is great. Should procurement be in there, Dave?
Should be experienced in procurement.
And maybe ask the chief procurement officer of town.
Well, the thing with chief procurement officer is certified. So you can have a procurement officer who has not been certified by the state.
Okay.
Okay.
But may, may.
The next person may not.
Next person may not, and then maybe something that you're willing to work for.
Okay.
I think everybody at this point in this type.
Yeah, okay.
If that's something down that last area, when we talk about what we're looking for is.
Um, we're a master's preferred and procurement certification preferred or. Do we want to do that? Is that going to weed people out?
You might find that people said, geez, I have two or three courses. Something I go and wanted to do, but.
Yeah, I don't want to scare them off. Yeah.
Yeah, could we save that for the question? Yeah.
Okay, so we've got it in there. Let's mention this.
Is there anything else we're seeing? I know a few other towns have openings that we're lacking in your opinion, or are we sort of melding all these together?
Not, it's not.
Okay.
No time to do stuff like that.
It's Wednesday, the twelfth, stay home.
I thought Monday was.
Uh, the tenth is Columbus Day. And they're gonna go to Dave, so any applicant should be emailed to Dave, he's the current town administrator. Yep.
I, I'm going to be gone. We're probably going to be interviewing people unless you start interviewing. On the thirteenth or fourteenth.
When, when are you back?
I'm leaving the nineteenth and I'll be back November fourth.
Well, you're leaving October nineteenth?
Yeah. No, I actually left yesterday and I'm coming back in November.
Okay, so we're gonna start reviewing on the twelfth.
Okay. Yeah, and I can do the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Okay.
From New Zealand? Yeah, I'll be right on that. It's sixteen hours ahead.
Okay.
So ten A M. here is two A M.
Yeah, ideally, hopefully, we have a, you know, at least a handful to look at for twelve, thirteen, fourteenth.
Yeah.
Um, maybe we have a board meeting the thirteenth. So if we can sit and chat and go over the applications we have.
Yeah.
Um, so October thirteen, let's have a meeting here at like five P M. earlier, so we're not.
Yeah.
You know, we can take, take our time with the room. And then if we're lucky enough to have sort of narrowed down a couple of candidates, maybe we invite. It could be wicked short notice, but maybe we invite someone to come and chat with us on the eighteenth. Our normally scheduled meeting night Tuesday, is that too much before you take off Tuesday, the eighteenth? What would you, would that be squeezing too much?
I don't want to be interfering with this process at all, so.
Okay.
Would like, would do what I need to do.
So yeah, maybe we could do earlier on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Start at like four.
Yeah. Try to get as many people in here to talk with as many different ideas as possible.
That's a good thing.
And then. You know, we'll have some, well, almost like a quiet period to check some references ideally over that next time span, whether it be Dave or myself as the chair of the board, call and reach out and do some background checks. And then Leah returns on the fourth, so we'll meet again on the. Probably this, we have to find a night to talk.
So we've got election.
Yeah.
On the eighth, and we can't have a meeting that night, so we're gonna have to change that meeting. Did we decide when we're gonna have town meeting, ninth or twelfth, fourteenth?
Yeah, that's coming up.
Well, this, I think, this job description is excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, right.
Other than that, grammatic change with the budget being inclusive. I would motion that we would proceed with this job description as written.
And post tomorrow or as quickly as we efficiently can?
Dave's gonna run right out right now.
Yeah, he's gonna, we're gonna hit pause and go. Yeah, because we know that you're finishing up your contract and we totally respect that and we want to get the next person. Yeah, when we get, you know, them into the. Just.
Yeah.
The town and get them going, so.
Okay, was there a motion?
Yeah, that.
Now, all those in favor? Um, we also have on the agenda, if that, we satisfied that topic, the T A job.
Yeah.
Good to go. Next on the agenda is continued discussion of an update to the junk and unregistered, unregistered motor vehicle by law. Let's push on that one.
What's the genesis of that?
I think it was something that Brian had left as like an action item. Previous T A Brian, um, to sort of close the loop in terms of defining the enforcement of it. Is it the zoning enforcement officers, is it the police, is there a fine per day? And we, you know, how are we actually determining what's a violation, what and what isn't?
We did pass a bylaw on this back in, was it two thousand nineteen?
We did, and I think Jake had referenced that in our last meeting, that it was twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, you made a few minor changes to mostly to increase the fees, streamline some of the processes, extend a few days and some things like that. But I will say, having spoken with the Williams Walker, because he does contend that it did not mean zoning means he can't enforce it. Right, that's right. But he made the point that it's kind of hard for you guys to do enforcement, hence why you're turning it him.
Yeah.
So the suggestion was it may be wise to suggest, because he said we really have a plan hard, so I mean, there's a whole global thing in law. And he was suggesting it might be wise to consider updating it and maybe translating some of these things actually to his own.
Okay.
So, okay, I'm, I'm gonna play the tape back, right? Because I remember this thing pretty well. And the discussion was that the police sheet was going to be the one that was going to carry out the enforcement.
Yes, you added a section that authorizes the police department to write a ticket, I think, once your hearing process is complete. Right, they were able to issue, but I don't think they were going to be the enforcers or something.
What issuing the ticket would be, would be an act of enforcement.
Okay.
No, I'm just kind of going back to, because it sounds like some of the things that we talked about. Have whenever either didn't make it to the bylaw or I, I, I don't know. And then there was, there was a lengthy discussion we had about penalty, right? And the penalty, the, the fine had to be punitive, couldn't be like five dollars a day or something significantly more than that. So that the fine acted as a deterrent. And I don't remember, probably left off on all that.
Which is why it's left on Brian's list for.
Yeah, I see that.
But, um.
What is the?
It was twenty five, it just bumped up to.
It had to be, I mean, it was, the fine was pathetic. I mean, you could dumb your nose at it, I mean, that wasn't the intent of the bylaw. Get you to pay attention and. But the, i- if there's a civil infraction, then it's not Dana, it's going to be police department. And there was process that they have to file a complaint, someone needs to file a complaint with the board, and then there's action taken. But the, the jurisdiction, the authority of the jurisdiction went to.
I think we had to kick this one back to zoning. To, we need to see what other towns are doing, just because there's a lot of gray on this, right?
There is a lot of gray and it's, I don't see this as a huge issue for us to be dealing with right now, but.
Well, I think it has a couple of particular properties in mind that.
One which is actually getting sort of cleaned up.
Yeah, it's frustrating some, some residents, which I totally appreciate. But I think we want to make sure we do it the right way and took a stab at it, but sometimes things change over the evolution of. Policy and issues. Yeah.
Has had a bylaw on the books.
Yeah.
And becomes a cabinet.
Yeah.
Car off to site for three weeks and.
Right.
Then moving out on background. You never seem to be able to get where you want to be with it because they're playing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And you don't want to be writing in a force and issue a citation every day.
Well, they can be able to. Once again, you get hearing for the judge and court magistrate. And, you know, the, the judge and magistrate would say, oh, you give another three weeks.
Right, it just.
Yeah.
But every citation every day or within that, they get the first citation and have some days to have it removed and then if not removed after that day, they get another salvation.
Yeah.
It should be easier when it goes.
Well, it's very personal, right? Like, you know, one person's trash is another person's treasure. Like, I, I mean, it's, it's your property, so like.
Yeah.
I don't know, I have a little New Hampshire in me, so I'm like, it's a live for your die mentality. Kind of respect that, you know, I don't always agree with it, but I get the nuance, but yeah, principle.
Well, I think we, I personally need to just meet up onto it a little bit more.
So maybe we'll look to revisit this after town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, give it some time to kind of settle and do some research and table it out for now.
Yeah.
That would be great, yeah, and maybe a new, it's, it could be a question for a T A interviewer.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess. Seriously, like. Yeah, what would you do? What's your, you know, what's your feeling on a town?
What is your bylaw set?
Happy to give them a heads up and a couple of questions and come up with some ideas. I mean, that's a real life problem that we towns kind of face.
Yeah, not to deal with it.
So I guess we'll.
It's a real, it's a problem for us, because I can think of at least four.
Yeah.
That I know of.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Home owners, uh, violations.
There's a couple in high traffic zones, so it's.
Absolutely.
They got the attention of not just our residents, but general public and question marks about like, what's going on at municipal?
Yeah.
Uh, next topic is vote to call special town meeting and set date. Further discussion of warrant articles and the expected timeframe for free cash certification.
So given, you know, the date of the nine, to be the, you have to have it posted by the twenty sixth of October. I got two weeks in there for a new warrant with, uh, between board and advisory. We open the warrant and I close it on the fourth. And then going sequentially down, the dates, you know, just changing out. I, I put in the election.
The second Tuesday.
It's the eighth, yeah.
Who are clear there.
So how was Ellen feel about having to deal with an election and a town meeting? So probably the fourteenth.
I would agree with that. I think I'm gone the fifteenth through the nineteenth of the country, so.
Yeah.
Well, sort of, yeah, in sequential order, where you have to make a motion to open the warrant tonight. Um, and then set the close date as October four. At five P M. And then we got to find a date after October five for a joint meeting.
And actually, the board may want to go through all of the articles prior to that joint meeting.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna have a spending plan put in place for that meeting, so. Um, Will knows where we're going to be doing a certain article, where the money's going to come from, not.
Okay.
I've been putting him on this.
Yeah, it's good, sort of working practice, right?
It's been a running thing for a couple of months.
So we have a scheduled meeting for the eleventh anyway. So we could do our review. Oh, no, the warrant closes on October four. Oh, yeah, no, that's right. So October eleventh, we have a meeting.
I am not here October eleventh.
Okay.
So I'd have it pushed to the twelfth. That's okay.
We're gonna start early on as well.
Yeah.
I have another meeting at six.
So you can review the warrant on.
Can we do the thirteenth?
We'll be ready to do that night, and in general anyways, we're sitting together and review applications, so. That'd be too much in a night, or would that be?
Okay, it's, yeah, it's, it can be, I mean, uh. You know, that warrant, I mean, I mean. That's a lot.
Perspective to this.
Yeah.
I mean, I could do a Zoom meeting. I'm, I'm flying in for Charleston, like.
We don't have Zoom. We don't have it in this room.
We could do an all virtual meeting. Could we do it the week before, like the sixth?
Between, we're gonna meet when we've gotten dusted on the sixth, is that at night or is that during the day?
I don't think we're included, to be brutally honest with you.
Oh, really?
So I don't know what.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I don't need to be there.
No, we know what's going on, it's usual.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could do the sixth if that was okay for folks for a warrant discussion night.
Yeah, I can do that, that Thursday, the sixth.
Five P M., four thirty.
Um, whatever you want.
It's two five and then. Yes, please.
What are we doing, five thirty?
Uh, five P M. October sixth. Is that okay with timing, Dave?
Fits right in, yeah.
So that's a warrant night.
Would you hold that meeting on the twenty seventh? This one?
We do have one technically scheduled for that night, but would we want to push?
It makes sense since you're holding a lot of the six plus tonight for me. So we would not have the twenty seventh.
We would not have a twenty seventh.
Well, is there anything? Well, I guess it may depend on where we are with some of these opportunities under this agenda.
Yeah, let's hold that for now.
Yeah.
But, um. The one thing that comes to head to me is the police union CPA bargaining. But we make sure we get, because I think we're in a good place there, but.
Okay.
Revisit that later on. So we need a motion to open the warrant?
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that the, that we open the warrant. Uh, effective today, September twenty, in a closed date of Tuesday, October fourth. At five P M.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? And then do we want to set a date of October sixth to have? More discussion.
Five P M.
Yeah.
Warrant of meeting. Review.
It should be, we need to post that in a couple of different places, right, Dave?
Uh, just to review the ones.
Okay, all right, that's all, it would be the night to do the public.
No, well, what do you do? I, I would recommend that you have a meeting of the board. So through the articles, figure out when to want to keep on, when to want to take.
Yep.
Then have a follow-up meeting with the advisory.
Okay.
For all the members of Florida.
Yeah.
Say this is where we're getting the money from.
Okay.
The, the wouldn't be meeting after the sixth.
On the sixth, we have a, just more of an application night, the thirteenth. We could do Tuesday and the eighteenth, we can interview night ideally. Six and then.
So we've got, right, so, so we've got the sixth, we have a regularly scheduled one for the eleventh, are we keeping that?
I will not be here.
You're not gonna be, okay. Then the thirteenth. And that's to start for, um.
That's thirteen, that five.
That's for.
Reviewing applications.
Thank you.
Yeah, there is a world where we may. I mean, if it's just us reviewing applications, we could potentially meet with the advisory board at five P M. that day. And then on the sort of agenda.
Oh, to do that.
To do the applications at like six thirty to seven thirty. I know that sort of stretches the day out a bit, but. Um, I, I don't know how long it'll take to meet with advisory.
Sorted it down, it's gonna, you're gonna have two bodies that are gonna be saying.
Okay.
Well, you should put that on, if you really don't want to put it on, you create the law.
Yeah.
So it's ultimately the decision of the board will take. You know, put something on, take something off.
Yeah.
And the advisory is just to read the articles that have been left on by, or put on.
But on the sixth, we will have made those decisions for which items we want to keep on the warrant.
Right, because the warrant will be closed at that.
Yeah.
Well, no, you're gonna close the warrant, but you haven't decided.
It's closed for people to submit, or put new stuff on there.
What's the sixth note you can add, unless the board opens up the warrant and inserts the article.
Okay.
So we need another meeting in there somewhere.
But I don't think that we should commingle the advisory board meeting and with other stuff, because. Those discussions with that board can come pretty protracted.
Would you want to do two nights in a row here on the twelfth? You had a meeting on the twelfth, right?
Um, if we. I do. This meeting in the past four months. Gonna miss the one in November as well, you know, I wish they would just fire me. Um, yeah, we have to do that, we have to do that, it's fine.
So it's gonna be a joint meeting at four thirty on the twelfth, maybe we got to get, get it out of here.
It's, it's on Zoom, so that's.
Okay.
I can.
It's on Zoom?
My, my other.
For second.
Meetings in Zoom meeting.
So on ten twelve, this is going to be an advisory board.
A joint, that's okay.
Right?
Yep.
Assuming they have a qualm, correct?
What time are we picking that, four thirty?
I said four thirty, but. I can be persuaded to do later, but.
I don't go later than five.
Yeah.
That's fine.
We can always change that time a little bit if we need to, if we hear from the chair that board says, hey, there's no way. And we have one for the thirteenth already at five for reviewing applications.
So we have the sixth, thirteenth, and the twelfth.
Correct, six, twelve, thirteen, yes.
And on the sixth, we've got to go on a festival meeting.
That's true.
Yeah, I could call.
I, I'm sure I.
If we're, we don't know if we're actually supposed to be there.
They didn't include you on the.
On the invite. Okay, you weren't, you weren't, okay.
If you weren't, then.
That's great. Yeah, Dave was there.
And this is more of that.
I would say so, yeah, it's on here.
It's the recognition of a water system, it's got to be.
Yeah, I think by this night, they should have some numbers. And they might want to start talking to us about it rather than just kind of. Most of them are gonna do something else.
I can maybe go over there and meet you, Dave. You guys. Or if you want to go, I mean.
I, I, I have no issues with that.
Sort of report back and.
Yeah.
That could be a diabolical issue, so we'll find out more.
All right, well, so if you're just gonna go possibly. Otherwise, we're not gonna. Posting a meeting for that.
Um, so we've ironed out town meeting dates as the, as November fourteen, Monday.
Yeah.
At, so we're gonna do it at the school, starting at, what's the best time for that in the evening?
We're gonna make sure that that's available. Call special time meeting for. Fourteen, fourteen, seventeen rounds.
At the second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, um. And just go.
Six, the twelfth, the thirteenth.
And the fourteenth.
With the fourteen.
Uh, sorry, fourteenth of November, sorry.
Yeah, so twelfth or thirteenth. Six, twelve, thirteen, and then possibly the eighteenth, right, for.
For a regularly scheduled meeting.
In interviews or whatever.
Yep.
And then not between the fifth.
Yeah, we would do that at five P M. on the eighteenth as well. Yeah, we would do that at five P M on the eighteenth as well.
Eighteenth.
The eighteen?
That would be the night we would interview before Leah. Heads.
About ten eighteen?
Correct.
What are we doing on the eighteen?
So we were a regular meeting and ideally meeting a couple potential town administrator candidates if we can that night.
And the twenty fifth?
That could be, you're out of country, but that could be Ron and I.
Finalizing whatever.
Finalizing whatever we need to do.
Okay. You can cancel it.
There's six, uh, we didn't take one, that's what, or five meetings in the month of.
Yeah.
October.
Good thing we all liked each other.
Yeah. Great.
Is ten twenty five a regular business meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ten, uh, the thirteenth is the one again, that's the only one I don't have, that's how to initiate it, it'll be in our.
Yeah, because we should have a handful of applications by then, so.
And then town meeting is gonna be on the fourteenth?
I remember.
Nothing is occurring the week of the seventh, just the town election, what was the state election? And it will be dark at four o'clock.
Yeah. That's that's the time thing.
Yep.
Okay. Um, last but not least on here is expected timeframe for free cash cert.
Uh, that it went in yesterday, so two, three weeks.
Got it. Um. That satisfies that topic. Are you guys here for a particular reason?
They're up here next.
You're up here next, okay.
Not next, but they're on for the um Woodward Mill Pond.
Do you wanna take that out of order just because the rest of the stuff gets wicked dry?
Yeah.
If you guys wanna. Just, I feel bad, it took another billable hour, and you wanna hit the dusty trail.
Yeah.
Um, so the topic is um proposal by town engineer for independent review of Woodward Woodward's Mill Pond Dam. So I will.
Thank you, so uh, my name is David Landley, which is my manager. Uh, town engineer.
Yep.
And I brought in today, uh, Jim Turner, I'm seeing associates, who's our.
Um. You could talk it out, whatever you're most comfortable with, yeah, whatever you want, yeah, we're pretty easygoing, we'll fight.
Can't speak for him. He bites him.
Uh, so when um Brian was here, he had reached out to me to take a look at the Woodward's Mill Dam. And I was stuck for a sub consultant, uh, and got some documentation at the time, he had some concerns about what was submitted by the previous consultant, looked at the dam. Uh, typically dams undergo um an inspection, Massachusetts that's usually done by the town, um, usually about every ten years. And depending on the findings of the phase one inspection, you move on to a phase two or phase three inspection. Somewhere in that that phase one inspection was done by the previous consultant. Um, there were some concerns that Brian had, so he said, you know, we'd like to review this. He reached out to us, we reached out to our sub consultant, put together a proposal, take a look at that. Unfortunately, that happened the same time that Brian left. Um, so that kind of just, yeah, so that got left hanging until uh Jake reached out. I mean, uh, last week, I believe it was about uh, resuming that. Uh, they reached out to Stevens Associates and I said, hey, you know, we wanna get this rolling again. And um, when we had a conversation, they had some thoughts, they had gone ahead with the work, even though we hadn't gotten authorization from the town yet to move forward. And I had some findings that I'd like um Jim to discuss tonight, uh, because that would really influence. The next part of the decision making.
Okay, so just one to my own clarity, right? The previous consultant, if I if I had this, should have been here at all, right? Yes, okay.
Yeah.
But.
Um, so, like Dave said, my name's Jim Turner, and what's um. What we had looked at was we had looked at those previous reports, I think we met at the town in February, maybe it was. And at that time, um, the thought was that the town, you know, the previous report identified some things that should be repaired. With the dam to maintain it and, you know, keep it in shape. And so the discussion we had with the town in February was the town wants to repair it, um, there were some sinkholes that had uh, several.
Yeah.
Several that had developed.
Reoccurring.
Yes, um, and they, like I said, become prominent um late last fall as well, which was after the last inspection. So the question was, um, you know, what needs to be done to repair the dam, what needs to be done to um to evaluate these sinkholes and repair the sinkholes? And so um in in reviewing the previous reports and some of the files from um the state, one thing that we noted was there's. Um, a discrepancy in the hazard class of the dam. So the state assigns dams um three classes, either a low, significant, or a high hazard. And that.
For for failing or?
Right, so it's it's for risk, it's a risk.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so if um if if the dam failed, what are the consequences, right? So low hazard generally meaning there's not much consequence, you know, high hazard, the opposite. And so there's a discrepancy between the state's files, which called the dam a low hazard, and the previous consultant, which called a significant hazard. And um, this has ramifications on um on what would need to be done to repair the dam and maintain it in the future and so on. And so um, in in looking at it closer, um, and we had some discussions with the state on a different project we were working on, and that was pretty similar, but you know, we knew. This question is here, um, but in looking at it, you know, we think that the previous consultant's classification of significant hazard is accurate, and how the state would interpret it. The state just hasn't necessarily included that on the panel yet. Um, so in in light of all that, I think with the time in February, what we were thinking needed to be done was to reconcile this hazard class business. Um, given that what we know now, um, we think the better approach is really, you know. We're pretty confident that it would be a significant hazard. Um, the next step would be as phase two evaluation, you know, the goal being to get to design of repairs and construction of repairs, right? So before we can get to design, we need to know all the things that might be wrong with it and the evaluation. And um any alternatives, depending on what the town's goals are. So phase two is what we would recommend as the next step, and that would include um evaluating the sinkholes. Um, evaluating uh any other deficiencies with the dam, uh, coming up with alternatives for how the town might address those things and what costs it'd be. So.
Question. Um, what is the criteria for determining the significance of the hazard?
Yeah, in this case, it's the fact that there's a state roof over top, crossing the dam crest.
Okay.
So um, but the if there is a, the regular state regulations for dams, um, say that if there is damage to a state roof.
Is it a state roof?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, I was thinking.
Um, if it's a state roof, it's it puts it in automatically as a significant hazard, and um in talking to the state, um, that that's how they implement it.
That's it, though, it's not like the amount of water that it gets released in failure and downstream flooding or anything like that, simply.
Uh, ordinarily, on other dams, that's how it'll be treated, so.
Yeah.
On on other dams, you would do a dam breach analysis, say, okay, well, if the dam breaks, you know, the water that goes downstream, this five feet deep, it's gonna affect certain places and so on. On this particular dam, um, I mean, I haven't reviewed all the downstream area, but it looks pretty.
It's a huge well, and it's gonna absorb a lot of water.
Exactly.
It hit places.
So, you know, at first pass, we're looking at the aerial photos, that's what I would say, so in this case, it would seem to be solely related to the fact that it's a state roof.
Because that's why I was curious.
We think that's the reason why Brian had asked for a second opinion originally, you know, do another phase one, see what you come to conclusion of. And um. You know, that I think was the idea, was how can we repair this and keep it as as a low risk? But like I said, when when Stevens Associates looked at it, they realized, again, from looking at another similar project.
Yeah, there's no way around it.
Automatically, because of what goes over it.
Yeah.
Um, now, one thing I wanted to bring into play is I know that um David had forwarded you the. Um, M V P that we got from Michelle uh Roden. Um, so Dust Bowl's one of ten communities left in Massachusetts that don't have the M V P designation.
We need to get that.
So this is one of the things that M V P addresses.
I know.
Yeah, there's a lot of money in there for that, and um I spoke with Michelle, and she said, basically, we apply for it, we're gonna get it, because being only one of ten communities left. The pot is open to.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Um, that would pay for anywhere between fifteen thousand and a hundred thousand dollars worth of consulting services to take the talents with the exercise of developing. An M V P um. Plan, which is municipal vulnerability preparedness, you look at your hazards such as dams, um, and other things, the criticality of them, value it, and rank them. From low medium to high, and then at that point, you get the M V P designation with the state, and that opens you up to other state funds. That have a twenty five percent local match. Dams are one of the favorite things they have on there, depending on how you treat the dam afterward. You have the opportunity to get money from the M V P program or from the dam program or from other programs. Um, to take care of that, we all know there's a lot of money in Massachusetts right now, the B I L has also dumped a lot more money at that, uh, by bars of infra- infrastructure law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so my recommendation is um. First, to allow Stevens Associates to move forward with submitting a cost proposal for the second phase. Rather than spending your money on the second first phase.
Yeah.
It it just doesn't make sense to do that at this point with the the class being something that. They've identified is is not gonna change regardless of their evaluation. My second recommendation, um, David said, you know, wait until the spring for the M V P. Um, that's when the solicitation's gonna go out, um, but Michelle can is willing to come and talk with. Um, with the board or doing a virtual presentation or having to answer your questions. Um, about it, I am an M V P certified provider, but she's the expert, she's a regional coordinator for E O E E A, by uh, Detective Office of. Environment Affairs. Um, so she's the one who has, she knows everything, all the ins and outs of the program and can answer all your questions about it. Um, she's willing to come and present or or do a virtual presentation. What she was saying is, there's a big push by the governor to get the rest of the communities on board, so there may be an earlier solicitation in spring. So it's better to have her come in and answer answer our questions now and talk about the program now than just to wait and proactive.
No, I think, I mean, if I recall, I was working on an M V P with North Redding years ago, like five years ago. And there was quite a bit involved with doing that. So.
Yes.
Maybe they've streamlined the process a little bit more now, because it was very new at the time and.
Mm-hmm, yeah, twenty nineteen was early in the.
Yeah.
That was really in the process. Um, the other thing too is, as I was reviewing um projects for the upcoming year with with, and earlier today. Um, talking about potentially renewing our contract with the town. Um, one, another thing that came up was the hazard mitigation plan has expired as well. And that's something that you can lump into the M V P, it's an automatic hand in hand, but it's pretty much the same process.
Yeah.
There's a little bit more that makes it um more robust.
Yeah.
But you started the process when you're doing the M V P, complete the process with your hazard mitigation program, your H M P.
Okay.
Um, so again, another thing that makes sense to to merge together in this case.
Yeah.
So I guess we probably need to go um. Having the engineers, specifically your your group, do the work Stevens and.
Stevens Associates.
Stevens Associates to get a proposal for what we need to scope out over there.
For the phase two.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, is Stevens gonna work for town?
Yeah, so they'd be the sub consultant to Boyle Tanner, so I'd be overseeing their work, working for the town.
Okay, but.
Who do we write the check to?
Right.
Steven, do you?
You've read it to us and we we.
Okay.
You tell me.
So the engagement is with Boyle Tanner, and Boyle Tanner is gonna have an engagement with Steven.
Correct, as you're, as the town engineer engagement is with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And do you have a proposal for us?
I don't currently, because we wanted to speak with you about it first, let you know again, the time was reevaluate, we were saying, money's better spent. Moving on to the steps.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I I don't, I don't have a problem with any of that, what you need to do is just put together a proposal and says. Look, this is what the fees are, and here's how it's gonna work out, and submit that so that this board can act on that proposal and create that engagement letter so you guys can go forward.
But I think, you know, he's right, and we're gonna start jumping on the M V P so that we can tie in any mitigation work through M V P.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a many merits, so what do you mean, so all are.
Yeah.
So these, the phase. Um, the phase two evaluations in general, uh, we haven't priced out the specific one here, but I mean, they could be anywhere from thirty to sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, depending on if we're letting into drilling borings or other types of things, so.
Don't back bigger than it.
It's not that big, it's not that old. So, I I. Yeah, I don't know what's going on, something's up there.
Yeah.
We had this Haley Aldrich report that was written.
Mm-hmm.
Because there was an inspection, the state came up with Dan, and they, we had to get a consultant, and we had Haley and Aldrich, and they did that report. And from that point, which was some number of years ago to today, we've done nothing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and Haley's report talks about spalling concrete and all this kind of stuff. Oh, because I ain't been done to the dam at all, and now the sinkholes have developed, and several of them, but they accurate, and a couple of those sinkholes have been filled more than once.
Right.
And they reoccur, so now the San Francisco system going.
Exactly, the ground loss happening somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a matter of where. Yeah, I mean, I think our, I think our goal for tonight is not necessarily to get approval, was mostly to touch base on where where we've seen that's been what we've seen coming up. And um, and get familiar with the, you know, with it all.
Well, I think with David's help and your help, your firm's help, I think we have to figure out what's going on over there, and then simultaneously be working on M V P grant or any type of other grant opportunities that are.
But we have to become a. M V P proof town first.
Yeah.
We have to be an M V P proof town, and there's a process that you have to go through. It is, yeah.
It's, so what what's involved with that? Yeah, you've done it and you've done.
I worked on it one time ago.
Yeah.
So you bring it together all of them, because you identify vulnerable locations in community.
All the maps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Decide what, you know, options are real, and that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah. Me, I I've sort of roughly looked at it in my head, I kind of have an idea of it.
So there's some parallel paths in.
Yes, exactly.
Oh, if you're gonna do this in the fall, thirty sixty now, so.
Yes.
Right. Right.
Well, we need the M V P to fund this thing.
So we need to start with the M V P, well, I I, it's worth it for us to get a proposal.
Again, the M V P two could also fund, it's not a guarantee, the M, so the the planning part is guaranteed, we'll get money to to go through the planning exercise. The action grant says, okay, when we were going through our our list of vulnerabilities, we identified. The Woodward's Mill Dam, because one thirteen goes over, and so we know we need to do something about it. That we're competing with other communities for. Um, now, outside of the action grant. Um. Open solicitation phase. Michelle can offer comments on. You know, what makes a proposal more robust than other proposals.
Okay.
So just make a strong, robust proposal for this getting funding. Then come the action grant phase, because you can submit it, and it's a twenty five percent match, really.
Okay.
So. They usually don't award it for design and construction. So that's the thing, one of the things about it is, you know, this is gonna be the shorter money.
Shoot your shot.
And this, and this phase, and then later on for other phases, and there's also opportunity again, and you can. Um. There might be opportunity to double that between the M V P funding and dam funding or other funding, there's also being a break, and there's a whole bunch of other.
Yeah.
Things out there, so it's a matter of finding which one's gonna give us the more most bang for the buck. Um, but having this study in line with that, we easily up that on the M V P scale, saying, look, we don't even have this, we already have these deficiencies, and we need help here, we don't have the money to fund it, so. You have all those criteria that can help. propel it up the ladder. So having, having the study done sooner rather than later. Only helps us. Otherwise, you're pushing that further down. You have to wait until you get the MVP settled and we have to engage them to do that. It's just. Now also increasing the risk on the dam because you still have the sinkholes happening.
But we can do this study and then pay for it in like June. I swear we're good for it. And I think it's also a really unique project for a new TA to walk into. It could be. You know, just like the one thirteen project is, right? But I mean, a dam is critically important to the town and so is the roadway. So it's something that's gotta get done. I mean, you have my support. I'm not gonna speak for all the other board members. I think we just gotta figure out the dollars and cents.
Unless we lie on hard.
We could always do that.
But maybe we probably be the November-ish meeting where we have. Time to revisit this.
Yeah.
Again.
Well, there's no harm in putting proposals for.
Let's, we'll get this MVP thing and the status plan too as well. Cause you need to have a parallel path again. Just resolve.
So I can reach out to you and coordinate with. Michelle.
Okay.
We can see, you know, the board and many others. I don't know if you prefer to have her come to one of these meetings or prefer to. Do Zoom meetings during the day or in the evening.
Twenty meetings lined up, so.
Roden, R O W D E N. And if we know more about what's necessary for like that report and that MVP concept, because we've done some things with. The Housing Production Plan where that's taken some research and such. I don't know any thing in the Housing Production Plan that NIMCOG has asked. Asked us to prepare is similar to that. Even if it's like the same paths of getting information from certain department heads. I don't know, just an idea because we've done some of that work already, so. Yeah, she can help with that.
Yeah, okay.
I'd likely be working with a couple of sub consultants on that process because I mean, there are people who've done it over the past several years.
Yeah.
Done it quite to the level they have. So then looking for someone to work with me who has done it enough times that. They can get the information quickly and all the information to get and then. Another sub consultant would be one that specializes in the hazard mitigation.
Yeah.
Okay. But I'll reach out and coordinate with Michelle.
Okay.
Cool.
Do you have a question, Joe?
I do. MVP. What is that?
I have a.
Municipal vulnerability preparedness.
And just. This is have. Does joining this or becoming this, it's just. There's no strings attached to this.
No strings attached. So the nice thing about it is it's actually, it can be the foundation for a. Capital improvement plan. Or an asset management plan. What you're gonna do is you're gonna go through with. Police, fire, hazard. Planning board, get a commitment from a few high level people. You gather all your stakeholders. We have community members. You get together, you talk about, but with the guidance system documents, where the hazards are in the town. And where your strengths are. You have a school that you can house people in if there's a flood or a fire or. A windstorm that knocks our power or things like that. You talk about the different hazards you've seen over the past several years. And you. Once you plan that all out, you can rank your hazards from low to high. And then after that, you have that in your arsenal to say, okay, these are some problems we have. These are the ones that have risen to the top and address these right away. We can pop these other ones off later. In the interim. We're encouraged to meet on an annual basis and reevaluate that list. So if we find that something comes up and we weren't thinking this is bad of a hazard. And now it's identified itself that it is, we can move that up the right, moving along the diagram.
It's like a SWOT analysis.
Exactly.
The weaknesses, the opportunities.
Exactly.
Threats, blending them all together.
So you can move them around as they reveal themselves. And then again, you can. Every year you apply for the action. The action grant's only gonna get more money because the. The Commonwealth is funding more money, dumping more money into that pot for us to choose from. And they like to have new applicants, like to have new people into there. There's certain criteria though. They prefer green infrastructure and things like that. But if you. If you're creative in how you identify your, your, your hazards and if you're creative in your solutions to your hazards, then you get. You can get funded from that source. The other thing is that other entities are looking at that. Because they look at that and they say, okay, they've already done new steps. We know they've identified their hazards and and their strengths. So that's more favorable for some of the other programs that are out there. There are other programs are looking at it like, I know the dam group is looking at it. If you're out by the seacoast, there are other groups that are looking at it. Depending on what you have for hazards and depending what you're looking for for funding. Other groups are looking at the MVP designation and saying, okay, we know they've done this baseline.
Right.
And so they're aware of what their issues are. So it only helps. And again, the, the, the planning grant pays for the. The services, the consultants to go through and take the town through that exercise. It's the only commitment on behalf of the town is time. Yeah, there, they can do some, I believe they can do some funding if there's certain people in town that can get paid for their services to be here.
Yeah.
But on, on most parts, we'll get together for town meetings. It's usually conducted in either one eight hour session or two four hour sessions. And the consultants are the one that bring forth the paperwork and report all the results and then process that, put the report together. And then the core group reviews that and research if it's there. Let me present it and it becomes public knowledge. So you can go right on, on right now on the website. I can forward you the link. You can look at any of the surrounding communities and see what they've done for theirs, how to get a sense of, you know, what's involved. And you'll see different reports, different reports from different consultants.
Yep.
They'll look a bit different, but you know, the end result is there. You can look at the list and what they've identified and what they're telling the town.
It's actually a pretty interesting process and get every department head and together collaborating, looking at a plan of the town and. And of course, the firefighter guys are like, oh, but if that road's. That section of town's isolated. How can we possibly get there? You know, that's not something, you know, another group may have thought of there. The town wells are vulnerable to, you know, whatever. It's really interesting to.
Exactly.
Think about it in that way.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Shifting back to our agenda, we took that one out of order, adoption of a job description for least. For a police department administrator. Think you'd emailed this around, right? So for background on this is the roles of the administrative assistant down in the police department have greatly increased. Nothing short of the complexity of scheduling. Firearms certs as well as a few other budgeting. You know, transition from one leader to another. I certainly felt it was appropriate to revisit that job description.
When I made the photo copy, it didn't come out in color, of course. So the new sections would be the sections in red. See, it's a slightly different color on yours, but yeah, it's gray instead of.
So it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's that lighter gray.
Okay.
So it's something I certainly support. For the person in that role now, so.
Administrator. What's it gonna change to? Administrator, administrator, police administrator. And this is something other police departments do? Yeah, yeah.
It's also, if you look at the path that are now departed. Conservation and planning administrator took follows a similar evolution. Right, exactly. And it starts to help create some structure for the town as we start to. Think about future human, human resource and org chart. Personnel bylaw or revisit those topics, but. I think this person in the role now would be highly sought after in the community as well. So I think with their increase in responsibilities. I feel pretty strongly that they deserve this, got a pretty good job based on what. You know, Erica said and the previous chiefs before him.
Let's see J I S. Did your previous person do any of that, do that? Okay, but your new person that loves, listen now do.
I, I don't have a problem with this. My only, my only concern, they, from a management perspective, right? You, this, this looks like it's excerpted from the certification documents.
Well, that's where they're all posted.
Yeah. But this doesn't have a rev data, right? Are you gonna be okay with all that? Fixing this so it looks.
Oh, yeah, it'll have, it'll have a revision date by the world.
Yeah, cause right now it's from down.
Again, I was inverted this up so you can see what it would look like. I would do a photograph.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, it's one of these things that. We don't wanna micromanage the police department anymore than we want to micromanage fire department. But if this is what you're saying, you need to have to make this individual efficient in what she does to support. Police Department. And you guys, and you've socialized this with the others, I guess, to some extent, right? Maybe. She's probably already doing half of these things anyway, right? I don't.
Well, she has been, yeah.
Yeah, she's got some skin in the game on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem ever with this at all. I'm just reading through it.
Yeah, so you've changed all this, that the, the timings change.
I do wanna be sure to keep the administrative assistant to, to chief of police. I mean, obviously, it's just about the word doc or, you know, Google Doc, whatever.
So keep this job description, but you're going to create the new one based on.
Yeah. Cause you know, these duties and responsibilities, we, we can create parallels in other departments. Slightly similar veins, because I think that's gonna help us create structure. For the town, you know, and that's one of our main focal points for the next DA's human resources structure for the town.
She doesn't do any dispatching, right?
No, I mean, she does use the radio and say she needs to call us, but she doesn't give us calls.
You know, do we need a motion?
We do. I'm gonna have Joe and ask a question.
Wondering if this involves. Pay increase and you have this money in your budget.
Yes, yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
So I move that we modify, allow Stephen modify his job description. Ask these providers to include the additional responsibilities. This document doesn't have a date on it, but I'm sure they will. Make it a little document. To increase or clarify our jobs, that individual's job description to include these activities.
Actually, I wanna, before I second that. I think we're looking to adopt a new job description for. Of the police department administrator. It's not, I think we're looking to not modify the administrative assistant because we want to keep that as an open job position. This would be the next step up and we're creating a new police department administrator.
You had changes to you, because these aren't in color. So you had changes to, the changes were in red.
But what he's, but what? What he didn't do is put red up top here with the police administrator. Which it should be, he's gonna strike. We're gonna keep this job. If you get rid of the red that was in here, this job could stays. She's bumping up to a new job that was created.
Is the new job title police administrator?
Yes.
Well, that's the problem, because if you're administrative assistant, the next step up would be administrator. And then senior administrator. Because the administrator could supervise the administrative assistant in another department.
So we actually wanna keep this job. So strike that motion.
Well, I'll just modify it to include a change in the job.
But we're not doing that. No, no, we're creating a new position. We're not modifying the existing one.
Yeah, but a lot of these are already in the old.
Because she's gonna be doing this and all this new. The original, the administrative assistant would be doing just this stuff, not all the new stuff.
So if she went out of one powerball and never returned. We would be looking for someone to hire as an administrative assistant.
Who would start off.
Have those responsibilities, less the gray or gray ones at the bottom.
Wouldn't have that. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we create a new job position within the police department to be titled Police Department Administrator.
Second.
Uh, my one last thing, I'm just gonna be sure as, we will no longer have an administrative assistant for the time being with the current administrator. Being placed into this new role.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So is the police department gets another F T E? Or just pushing someone up the proverbial food chain here?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? Yeah, tell her thank you as well. Next on the agenda is for our fire chief vote on declaration of surplus items for the fire department as well as a town clerk person. But she's not here, so I'm.
More surplus, oh, the compressor? I'm fine with that.
I'll hear a motion.
I move we put that on. Get rid of that.
My only, my only comment on that is if they're gonna put that on unit bid or municipal bid, right?
I don't think it's broken.
Yeah, it is. That's what I'm just saying.
Well, someone possibly use it by heart.
Yeah, Facebook Marketplace.
Yeah.
We need to.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
It can go to John.
And Carol bought it with fifteen years ago, never used it. And Ellen really seems to use it more. We asked the department, it's not very clean by, they moved down. So we're just looking for people to get rid of that.
Yeah, what are we getting rid of? A voting machine, a Dominion?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a. It's like a circular thing. You can put like, you know, neighbor to neighbor or whatever and it turns around and you can pull documents out of it, but.
Yeah.
I move you get rid of the spinning file cabinet.
All those in favor? Otherwise, we have a few executive session topics. Topics.
One set of minutes.
In one set of minutes. I'll take one question, Joan, before we spend the next hour discussing other things. So it'll be a quick one. Holding you to it.
Couple meetings ago. We were, uh, we approved the. And. Am I walking past it, did we get a ballot box, what's the status of that?
I think they're really hard to get right now.
Reviews of what's online, I actually went to visit a friend yesterday on day off.
Yeah, I mean, price and availability. We will, uh, head to executive session now, now, and we will not return to normal. Business.
Do we want to address the minutes first?
I'll hear a motion for the August nine minutes.
I know we accept the meeting minutes as provided for the August ninth.
I make a motion, we close the public session of this meeting?